January 4th, 2016, please call the roll.
Mayor Kuss.
Here.
Mr. Fritzen.
Here.
Mr. Preston.
Here.
Mr. McBride.
Here.
Mrs. Lorenz.
Here.
Mr. McCarthy is not here, Ms. Gaines.
We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As always, our first item of business is the omnibus agenda, and these are items that are considered routine and will be handled with one vote unless a council member would like to pull an item for discussion, and I would like to be excluded from voting on any bills. I may have incurred my duties as mayor. Mr. Fritzen?
Item E, please.
E?
E, yes.
Ms. Lorenz?
I would like to pull item H, please.
Motion for approval.
Item G, please.
Motion for approval.
Second.
The items we're considering in the omnibus vote tonight are approval of minutes of the regular meeting of December 21st, 2015, and approval of town of Normal expenditures for payment as of December 30th, 2015. We have approved, we'll approve a motion to approve the asphalt street resurfacing priority list for fiscal year 2015, 2016, a resolution authorizing an extension of an agreement with United Liquid Waste Recycling, and that's for lime sludge removal at, for our water treatment, a resolution authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement with McLean County for centralized booking services, an ordinance amending section 8.1-13C of the municipal code of the town of Normal regarding mailbox placement, an ordinance adopting the 2015 international codes and amending Chapter 11 Building Code of the municipal code of the town of Normal, and an ordinance amending section 6.4-1 and 6.4-16 of the municipal code of the town of Normal and adopting the 2015 fire code. Please call the roll.
Mr. Fritzen.
Aye.
Mr. Preston.
Aye.
Mr. McBride.
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz.
Aye.
Ms. Gaines.
Aye.
Mayor Kuss.
Aye. The omnibus is approved with the exception of the items pulled, the first of which is a resolution authorizing the execution of a three-year towing contract for Joe's Towing and Recovery.
Move approval.
Thank you. Second, Fritzen?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. The types of comments that come back to us after somebody's car has been towed or whatever, I know there's a schedule of fees here from from Joe's. I'm wondering if towing scenario, if the cost is remaining the same to the person whose car has been towed, other than that impoundment situation that's specifically mentioned in the memo.
For the most part, I have to excuse my voice a little bit. For the most part, that was one of the things we sat down and negotiated. The agreement with representatives from Joe's Towing was that we tried to keep as many of the fees as flat as possible, and if there were going to be increases, we wanted to put those in the areas where their services had shown an increase. And so, in talking with them, representatives from their company, they are seeing many more vehicles that are being unclaimed and are staying in their yard for an extended period of time, and that's what led to the $35 recommendation for that fee, because it just takes more of their staff time to document the vehicles to check on and to make sure that they are not released when they shouldn't be. And then the rest of them, our goal was that for those individuals who simply just need a tow from point A to point B, or they're involved in an accident and they need their vehicle towed to a repair shop or something like that, or a body shop, that we keep those rates as reasonable as possible. And I think Joe's was very understanding of that, and as part of that negotiation agreed to keep the rest of the remaining rates flat. If we did agree to try and propose that increase in the impound fee, where they were seeing a bulk of their time spent on those vehicles.
Okay. The other question I have is, it's a little concerning that there's only one response to the RFP. Were the specifications written basically the same as in previous bids? Any major changes in our bid document from, say, you know, the last time or?
I don't think so. There were a few, I mean, when I say tweaks, we did tweak it a little bit to allow for individuals, if they wanted to bid price on towed vehicles with an impound fee or without an impound fee, and in this case Joe's just chose to keep the flat rate the same and make the increase only on an impound charge. But other than that, there were very few changes, if any, that were made, other than just to the timelines and stuff of the RFP that was put out back in 2012. And I think we did have two, two individuals, Joe's Towing and another vendor, that showed up for the pre-proposal meeting, sat down, we asked, answered their questions, but they were not, they, for whatever reason, chose not to submit a proposal when it came time. So, in light of that, though, I felt that, you know, still, if we were able to remain the rest of the costs flat, I felt that was a pretty good sign, even with only Joe's Towing. And I have done some checking around with other US entities. I know Bloomington rates, although theirs is a little bit different because they have a franchise agreement that they go into with their vendor, which happens to be Joe's, but their rates are higher than what our rates are. In light of that, though, I felt that, you know, still, if we were able to remain the rest of the costs considerably flat, I felt that was a pretty good sign, even with only Joe's Towing. I have done some checking around with other US entities. I know Bloomington rates, although theirs is a little bit more than ours, however, I think they have a franchise impound lot. Their rates are higher than what our rates are. In light of that, though, I felt that, still, if we were able to remain the rest of the costs considerably flat, I felt that was a pretty good sign.
One of the, just to, one of the limiting factors.
I have done some checking around with other US entities. Their rates are higher than ours. Their rates are higher than ours. In light of that, though, I felt that they're held for impound, still, if we were able to remain the rest of their rates considerably flat.
One of the, just to, one of the limiting factors.
Their rates are higher than ours. Their rates are higher than ours. In light of that, though, I felt that they're held for impound, still, if we were able to remain the rest of their rates considerably flat. One of the, just to, one of the limiting factors. Their rates are higher than ours. Their rates are higher than ours. In light of that, though, I felt that they're held for impound, still, if we were able to remain the rest of their rates considerably flat. In light of that, though, I felt that they're held for impound, still, if we were able to remain the rest of their rates considerably flat. In light of that, though, I felt that they're held for impound, still, if we were able to remain the rest of their rates considerably flat. In light of that, though, I felt that they're held for impound, still, if we were able to remain the rest of their rates considerably flat. In light of that, though, I felt that they're held for impound, still, if we were able to remain the rest of their rates considerably flat. In light of that, though, I felt that they're held for impound, still, if we were able to remain the rest of their rates considerably flat. In light of that, though, I felt that they're held for impound, still, if we were able to remain the rest of their rates considerably flat. In light of that, though, I felt that they're held for impound, still, if we were able to remain the rest of their rates considerably flat. In light of that, though, I felt that they're held for impound, still, if we were able to remain the rest of their rates considerably flat. In light of that, though, I felt that they're held for impound, still, if we were able to remain the rest of their rates considerably flat. In light of that, though, I felt that they're held for impound, still, if we were able to remain the rest of their rates considerably flat. In light of that, though, I felt that they're held for impound, still, if we were able to remain the rest of their rates considerably flat. In light of that, though, I felt that they're held for impound, still, if we were able to remain the rest of their rates considerably flat. In light of that, though, I felt that they're held for impound, still, if we were able to remain the rest of their rates considerably flat. In light of that, though, I felt that they're held for impound, still, if we were able to remain the rest of their rates considerably flat. In light of that, though, I felt that they're held for impound, still, if we were able to remain the rest of their rates considerably flat. In light of that, though, I felt that they're held for impound, still, if we were able to remain the rest of their rates considerably flat. In light of that, though, I felt that they're held for impound, still, if we were able to remain the rest of their rates considerably flat. In light of that, though, I felt that they're held for impound, still, if we were able to remain the rest of their rates considerably flat. In light of that, though, I felt that they're held for impound, still, if we were able to remain the rest of their rates considerably flat. In light of that, though, I felt that they're held for impound, still, if we were able to remain the rest of their rates considerably flat. In light of that, though, I felt that they're held for impound, still, if we were able to remain the rest of their rates considerably flat. In light of that, though, I felt that they're held for impound, still, if we were able to remain the rest of their rates considerably flat. In light of that, though, I felt that they're held for impound, still, if we were able to remain the rest of their rates considerably flat. In light of that, though, I felt that they're held for impound, still, if we were able to remain the rest of their rates considerably flat. In light of that, though, I felt that they're held for impound, still, if we were able to remain the rest of their rates considerably flat. In light of that, though, I felt that they're held for impound, still, if we were able to remain the rest of their rates considerably flat. In light of that, though, I felt that they're held for impound, still, if we were able to remain the rest of their rates considerably flat. In light of that, though, I felt that they're held for impound, still, if we were able to remain the rest of their rates considerably flat. In light of that, though, I felt that they're held for impound, still, if we were able to remain the rest of their rates considerably flat. In light of that, though, I felt that they're held for impound, still, if we were able to remain the rest of their rates considerably flat. In light of that, though, I felt that they're held for impound, still, if we were able to remain the rest of their rates considerably flat. In light of that, though, I felt that they're held for impound, still, if we were able to remain the rest of their rates considerably flat. In light of that, though, I felt that they're held for impound, still, if we were able to remain the rest of their rates considerably flat. In light of that, though, I felt that they're held for impound, still, if we were able to remain the rest of their rates considerably flat. In light of that, though, I felt that they're held for impound, still, if we were able to remain the rest of their rates considerably flat. In light of that, though, I felt that they're held for impound, still, if we were able to remain the rest of their rates considerably flat. In light of that, though, I felt that they're held for impound, still, if we were able to remain the rest of their rates considerably flat. In light of that, though, I felt that they're held for impound, still, if we were able to remain the rest of their rates considerably flat.
Spent to date roughly thirty, almost $35,000 on engineering. We estimate that there will be another $680,000 in expenses to actually either replace these underground utilities that cross underneath the rail line, or in some cases, improve them by extending the protective casing that is around the utility. That's required in some cases because the, essentially, the rail line is being widened, the overall rail bed is being widened, so the railroad is requiring that we have additional casing protection. And then there also are some miscellaneous sidewalk replacement projects that will be required to do in accordance with the high-speed rail project. However, I will say that, that those have other, you know, benefits. Clearly, you know, there's a public benefit beyond high-speed rail to those sidewalk improvements. These are things that we acknowledge that we need to do. So, you had asked previously of me, what, what kind of costs are we looking at? At this point, we've identified about $950,000 worth of cost of these various improvements. The bulk of those costs will be attributable to one of our three enterprise funds, water sewer or storm sewer, storm sewer. But there will be some, some that come out of other sources, MFT or general fund or capital. We believe, these gentlemen tell me, that as far as we know, this is likely the last improvement that at least we've been told about, that we, we sort of aren't sure about that, because certainly the railroad or I dot could identify some other improvement that we are at this point not aware of. But as you understand, as we have installed utilities that cross the railroad right-of-way underneath, there's an obligation that if improvements are needed, we're on the hook for those. We have found out as this project has gone on, we're on the hook for more than we had thought. There were some very old agreements, 50-year-old agreements, that the railroad resurrected that said, sure enough, many years ago, we said, if these ever need to be replaced or if they ever need to be improved, whether it's our fault or whether it's by, by direction of the railroad, we're obligated to pay for those. So, certainly, it's been a little more expensive than we expected, but we really have no choice.
Okay. I don't seem to have that memo at my place.
Okay.
So somehow, but, but thank you for that verbal update, and I don't know if you have anything more?
The only thing to add, Mark mentioned this, there were two improvements. I think you've approved a sewer improvement on Broadway, and then this particular improvement at College in Oak, that, again, this, this permit was recently discovered. So, we weren't not on the hook for this improvement until this permit was discovered, and then, then they said we're on the hook because there is an existing permit.
Okay.
Just found out today. You'll also see, probably at the next meeting, there's three minor documentation agreements, like a supplemental agreement like this is, that will apply to three other improvements that we've been aware of. Two water improvements, I think, and a sewer improvement, that they're requiring just a documentation supplemental agreement for that. But we've been aware of those projects.
Yes, there are three that we were aware of, from the outset, that we initiated the engineering on and are ready to go out for bid to do those utility remediations. And just to add, the sidewalks are currently in the budget in the motor fuel tax. We've just been kind of on delay because we really can't do those till the crossing work is done. And what those sidewalk extensions will do will allow crossings on both sides, a protected pedestrian crossing on both sides of those streets.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
That was going to be my question. So, we're going to get the sidewalk on the eastern side of Fell Avenue?
Fell Avenue, yes.
Great. Further on this item, please call the roll.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Ms. Gaines?
Aye.
Mr. Fritzen?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McBride?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. The resolution is approved. That concludes our omnibus agenda. We have one item of general orders, and that's a resolution authorizing an amendment to the agreement with BLDD Architects for professional design services in the amount of $383,875 for the new fire station on Main Street.
Move approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. And, Mr. Peterson, I think you've got some introductions to make.
Quick introduction, we have some members of the design team that are here, that I'll let them introduce themselves, and they have a presentation to make. But we are ready to move on to the next phase of design, the completion of construction documents, which is the final design phase. And that's what we're asking you to approve this evening. You previously approved a, an agreement with the, the design team led by BLDD Architects, but other groups involved, to undertake what I call design development, some would call preliminary design. And that frankly has taken a little longer than we expected. We did highlight in the report, we've had some budget challenges, and that has caused the design team, as well as working closely with town staff and fire department officials, to work very hard to find some cost efficiencies and make, but at the same time, make sure that we have a design that not only meets the current needs of the fire department, but will meet the needs of the department well into the future. So, the item before you officially is to authorize an amendment to the agreement with BLDD to move on to the next phase of design with a cost of $383,875. But we also thought this was an appropriate time for the design team to present to you the preliminary design of the fire station and to give you an opportunity to see what it will look like and, and to understand its functionality and its capability. And then certainly, if there's any, any questions or concerns that you have relative to design, this would be the time for you to raise those concerns, because once we leave this phase, we will be preparing the final construction documents that will be used for bidding, which we hope will be done late summer or early spring of this year, with construction to commence shortly thereafter. So, we've got, we've got plenty of experts from the fire department on hand to, to provide you information. But we'll start with the members of the design team, and I don't know, go ahead and lead it. Bruce, and?
Good evening. Thank you for having us here tonight. We're excited to be here and be able to present the current status of the design, both plans and some renderings. I believe I handed out an 11 by 17 to you, so you can follow along with there. Some of the renderings may vary slightly. We've, we've done several of them, so just follow along as you can. And my name is Bruce Maxey. I'm a principal at BLDD Architects. I have with me Carson Durham, also a principal with our firm, and Steve Gosman, a principal at Five Bugles. They're our associate architect and our specialist in the emergency service operations and design. So, we couldn't have gotten as far as we have without their input. With that, I guess I would like to thank, as Mr. Peterson mentioned, we've spent a lot of quality time with the fire department staff and the city staff, getting their input on basically how to make the project scope and the building quality and the budget all align as best we can to get us to the, the absolute sweet spot where we have the, the building that operates as the fire department wants it, the quality that the city can keep and maintain over the life of the building, and at the dollar value that, as best dollar value that we can, we can see at this point in time. So, with that, I wanted to quickly touch on, see if I can do this from one side or the other. I wanted to quickly touch on and remind everybody where, where the project is located and give you some context. What you see on the screen and on the site plan is we have our, well, that worked for about two seconds. All right. Well, we'll use the cursor. What we have on the site plan is, what we have on the site plan is our, our building located, north is up on the site plan. Main Street is located on the left-hand side, US 51 North. On the north block is Dale Street. The south street bordering the block is Osage, and over on the right-hand side, we have University. Also on this block, there's some additional parking for ISU that will remain. There is their power chiller plant, as well as a fairly large Ammerin substation. So, that's kind of the context for the site. The building, as we'll run through for you, is a, is predominantly a two-story building that houses administration and living quarters, faces toward the west, toward Main Street. There is a one-story training room addition on the south end of that, that you'll see in the renderings. And on the, the east side of the building is the apparatus bay. You'll also note that there are aprons exiting the apparatus bay to the north and to the south. The north apron, the north entry to the apparatus bay will be the primary egress for frontline vehicles. They will exit onto Dale Street and be able to access Main Street or cross over to Kingsley, or they can go the other direction on Dale Street and access University. So, that was the predominant path for being able to, to get the vehicles out as quickly as possible and on the way to where they need to go. In addition to this, there is a parking area on the northeast corner of the site that will be approximately 20 spaces, as well as a parking area or existing parking lot to the south of Osage, which is 50 spaces. The, you'll note that there's actually some green showing here. This, this site right now is, is all paving and one small building, ISU building. So, hopefully that will help kind of increase the, the greenery in the area and provide some maybe less urban landscaping elements. And with that, moving on to the floor plan, please interrupt. If you have any questions, you can ask now, you can ask later. Happy to answer them as we go. First floor plan that you see here, one thing I want to note is that while north was up on the site plan, in order to adequately fit this on the, the paper, north has been rotated and is to the right. So, basically, 51 now runs along, Main Street runs along the top of the page. With that, we have the main entry off of Main Street. As you come in and you, looking to the, looking to the left, we have a one-story addition that incorporates a training room, seat about 100 people and chairs or 50 people at chairs and tables, public restrooms, and some storage and a service room for this training room area. This is a one-story part of the building, as personally covered in the renderings. Looking the other direction down the main corridor to the right, you see, that's the main department administrative area. Apologize. It includes room for their admin assistants, as well as chief's offices, assistant chief offices, conference room, work room, room for, for plan inspections and education. It includes the battalion chief offices and the lieutenant offices. Those are daily on-staff, serve as part of the fire station function. It also includes their residence rooms as well, so that their residence rooms are adjacent to their offices. The yellow portion of the building, yellow-green on the screens, is the apparatus bay. There are four bays, can hold, plan to hold a maximum of about 10 vehicles. There, they will exit both to the north and to the south, or left and right in this case. In addition to the apparatus bay, we have other areas that support the fire station function, including the watch office, which is situated in such a way to have control over the main entry for when the administrative area is not, is not occupied. There is also, it is also immediately adjacent to what is termed the training tower you'll see, which is one of the three, four actually, main circulations to the second floor. That will also be a place that will be used as a hose tower and will incorporate some low-cost training features, potentially some rappelling, potentially some confined practice entering manholes, et cetera. In addition to that, there is storage, toolrooms, EMS storage along this interface between the apparatus bay and the administration area. On the very east side or bottom, there is gear storage, the laundry decon area for the gear, as well as the electrical service and water service entering the building. Second floor is primarily living quarters for the station personnel. It includes three four-bed dorm rooms. The dorm rooms are designed in such a way that in the future, they can be, they could be separated into individual rooms if desired. But right now, we have grouped them as four to help maintain the project budget. In addition, there is a family room for the ability for the staff to meet with their family in a semi-private location without bringing the family back into the dorm room areas. There is also a small lounge area in the dorm room area to allow some quiet space for the station staff. We have an exercise room, a day room, and kitchen dining area that all have clear-story windows or windows into the apparatus bay. There are four points of access to the second floor, an elevator that's off the main lobby on the first floor, enters into the semi-kind of public area of the second floor. We have this stair tower, training tower that I mentioned before. In addition to that, we have another stair tower on the north. And between the day room and the dining area, there is a fire pole access to the first floor. On the very east side, above the gear storage area, there is a storage mezzanine as well as an SCBA workshop and a compressor room. The idea is those are, the compressor room in particular is a noisy element to try to isolate that from the living quarters as much as possible. We will be following the Form-Based Code. It will need to go through Plan Commission, which we will do once we further develop the drawings, probably likely the March Plan Commission meeting at this point. And the building will be seeking lead silver as part of the process. And with that, the rundown of the plans. And with that, Carson would like to talk about the design.
Is there any questions about the plans before we move on to the exterior of the building? So, for the exterior design of the building, it's really a blend of traditional civic architecture and sort of traditional fire station elements. We were very intentional about providing a building that represented both. And so, I think you'll see that in both in terms of the materials that we've chose for the building, as well as the massing for the building, and really some of the colors that you see relative to the exterior of the building. So, this is a perspective of the building, looking from the southwest. It has a very strong presence from this direction, because a lot of the traffic will be proceeding from this direction. As Bruce says, the one-story element, which is on the south side of this rendering, is the day room. It was very intentional for us to provide natural light into that space because, training, excuse me, training room. It's very important for us to provide natural light into that space, because it is a multi-purpose space, and folks may be spending quite a bit of time in there at times. So, we wanted to make sure that it had plenty of natural light. Not only that, it has, at nighttime, that portion of the building would be very visible. So, this idea that it may glow at night in terms of that presence is really important as well, as you move from the south to the north. The entrance element that you see there is the main entrance element, which combines that sort of civic architecture and firehouse architecture with its sort of oversized stone entrance with this very strong red door, which are traditional elements of a fire station. Materials that we're using for the building is a brick exterior, as well as the lighter elements are a natural limestone element. The massing of the building is very distinctive, because it represents each of the functional areas of the building. Go ahead and change those slides for me. This is the two-story portion of the residence area and office area. The window shaping and the muttons and all of the things relative to this portion of the building relate to its function. The entrance element is taller, as you can see, about two stories and a half, to give that entrance a really strong presence as well. One other thing that we looked at was making sure that we could push the building as close to the street as we could relative to the Form-Based Code. We know that this is an urban area, and we know that pedestrians will be walking back and forth next to this building. And we wanted to make sure that we sort of began that type of architecture that was very close to the street, which was really important. Go ahead, Bruce. This is a shot of the building at night. We're showing mature landscaping that will be included as part of the project, as part of our code requirements, and as well as to sort of bring back some landscape elements to this part of the city. Keep going. And so, this is, again, you can begin to see the elements of the building that were very deliberate in terms of our design to make sure that we, folks could really understand where the entrance was. They could truly understand that this was a firehouse. But it also was a civic building that everyone could feel proud of. Go ahead. This is the southeast perspective. You can see the hose tower element, which is, again, a traditional element that's part of our fire stations, firehouses, that we wanted to make sure that we expressed as well. Go ahead, Bruce. And then the north elevation, which includes those four wonderful doors that the trucks will be exiting the building. So, each facade of this building actually has a different sort of presence to it, but we wanted to make sure that they all are sort of combined together. So, you see brick and stone elements throughout the entire exterior design.
All right. One final thing. Mr. Peterson mentioned the schedule. You've been included a copy of that in your packet. Our goal is to basically get through the construction document process and get approval to put it out to bids on April 4th, hopefully receiving bids in early May, and being back here to award bids on May 16th. 30 days or so to execute contracts, get insurance in place for the contractors, et cetera. We'll start construction in June, and it is tentatively slated here to, shown to go through July of 17 now, following owner move-in and making sure everything works as it should, commissioning, and hopefully having the station operational the 1st of September. That will work hand in hand with what actually works for the fire department in terms of their timing and things. So, that may have to be adjusted. We haven't spent a lot of time on that yet. We're trying to get the design wrapped up. With that, happy to have any questions, take any questions you might have on the project.
I have one question that may not be in your purview, but somebody I'm sure can answer it. Oftentimes, on busy streets like this, there's controllable traffic controls to allow fire trucks into the, into Main Street. Is that part of this project, do you know?
Yes. We did a study. The civil engineers did a study and looked at the controls, how they worked along Main Street there. And the determination was that there would be warning lights placed along Main Street in front of the building to have some control or some warning as trucks exit from Dale Street onto Main Street. We also located the building in such a way as to maintain as much visibility as possible. We will be asking for one, well, a couple minor variances on the Form-Based Code. They relate to where the building is located and how they relate to the corner of Dale and Main, just to maintain the maximum visibility for the safety of anybody approaching those corners, as well as the trucks exiting.
Great. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Preston.
Quick follow-up to that last point, something I was going to bring up anyway. At this point, can you elaborate any more about the visibility, kind of hindrance that you guys are looking at at the corner of Dale and Main Street? Because as I look at, and the reason I'm asking, to look at the northeast perspective here, it looks to me like the building closest to Main Street, that portion of it, does extend further north than the actual bays. So, as you have apparatus leaving the bays, exiting quickly, I didn't know that, yeah, just in that picture. What kind of concern, if any, there was for visibility as apparatus are leaving there quickly, being so close to Main Street, but potentially blocked for part of that view?
Well, we, what I can say is, we did spend time evaluating that and locating that corner of the building as best we could to provide adequate sightlines for people approaching from the south on Main Street to see the trucks on Dale Street as they're about to turn on, with the addition of the warning signals that will be activated as the trucks leave the bays. So, that was our attempt to address that. There were some timing study done on, all the way down to the stoplight at Hovey and what would be appropriate there. And it was determined that the warning signals were the best course of action to provide adequate warning for people approaching on Main Street.
Chief Humor, do you have any comment on that? I know that's something that you looked at very closely.
I thought Mr. Preston's question was on the apparatus bay with the sidewalk there. Are you talking about pedestrians, or are you talking actually on?
I'm talking vehicles that may be on Main Street, but potentially may be taking a right toward the east on Dale at all at the time when apparatus is leaving.
What will happen is, is when we activate that light...
Mick, do you answer that too? Mick?
When we activate that light, there's a delay. So, that the traffic can flow while we're getting ready to leave. And the plan is that the traffic will already flowed through or be stopped by the time we get ready to make that corner. So, there's a, I don't know if it's 30-second delay or whatever that we do from the time we hit the emergency button till the time we actually get out and make that turn, the traffic should have either flowed through, or they should have gotten a red light, and they shouldn't be making a right-hand turn.
And clearly, the driver, the engineer is going to be very careful with that. I mean, they're going to approach that slowly and carefully to make sure everything's clear, like we would any busy intersection. Irrespective of, you know, the warning lights, we're still going to approach it very carefully.
And this is going to be a change for us, because we're going to a much more urban-type setting, where there's going to be a lot more pedestrians, a lot more cars and everything. But this is not new to the, it's new here in Normal, but it's not new to the fire service. They have fire stations that are in very urban-type areas and stuff like that. And we'll be, obviously be very cautious when we do that.
Of course. Great. Thank you.
While you're there, what currently happens at the headquarters station, I mean, you're right next to a signalized intersection, and there's a lot of traffic.
There's a 30-second delay, and they get the red light, and we get the green. So, Blair Street turns green, so we can either turn right, turn left, or go straight. Yeah.
So, you're already operating in that environment, and really with the signalized intersection is right at your front door, as opposed to one that's several blocks south.
And that also happens at our current station, too, on Adelaide. The light that's on Gregory Street is activated from the fire station as well, if we're going to go to the east.
Great. Mr. Lorenz?
I'd like to turn the conversation a little bit to some of the numbers prepared. Could you take us through this addendum that's been provided to us? And in particular, help us understand where the $383,875, where's that coming from? What does that involve?
All right. That...
Bruce, while you're looking that up, if I could add, Ms. Lorenz, I apologize for the confusion, but there, I did also place a memo at the council table to explain the $383,875. And I think it's summarized primarily on pages two and three of the BLDD agreement, which is broken down between the cost of construction document preparation, bidding, and construction administration, which totals about $263, correct, $263,575, and then some additional professional services for lead, technology, design services, commissioning, and FFNE services. So, the grand total would be the $383. So, and then I think, Bruce, if you have other comments to add.
I think you did wonderful, wonderfully. Basically, what this amount entails is the completion of construction documents, the administration of the bidding phase, and assisting the city with receiving qualified bids for the project, and then the construction administration phase as well, you know, monitoring the project during construction, providing those services. In addition to that, as it will be a lead project, there's some additional time we'll have to spend documenting all that information during construction, during design and construction, as well as commissioning. And then some services related to the technology design that will be incorporated into the building, which helps tie together the, as well as the AV systems in the training room, the cameras and things that will be used for both security and for the door entry access, things that are not typical to, I guess, most buildings. That's why we address them as additional services, as well as some furniture, fixture and equipment selection to help the department and the town resolve all the pieces of furniture, et cetera, that have to be selected and bid competitively bid or purchase through contract, state contract on the, for the project.
If I can continue on the line of questioning on dollars. I was kind of surprised in the write-up where there was discussion about initially, the project was thought to be around the $7 million design, but now it's creeping upward to almost $8 million. Can you comment on that, or staff wants to comment on that?
When we did the original programming, we had based our dollars on a, just a square foot cost, because we did, at that point, we didn't have a design concept. And when we went to the schematic design and worked through multiple concepts until we found one that was acceptable to the department, we then, that number actually went from seven to about seven and a half to accommodate the building that they felt was needed to provide the services as required. We went through a design development process where we finalized selection of mechanical systems and structural systems and the exterior, the exterior wall envelope and those things. And we did a detailed takeoff that's, I have a copy here. I know I've shared it with the town staff already. Doing the detailed takeoff, the cost, as it works out per square foot, turned out to be about $7.5 higher than what it was at schematic design. So, some of those dollars, some of that increase is just the cost. And looking at it in detail, we believe this is what it's going to cost on bid day. Actually, we want to be the second bidder. We want one below us, so that the town's getting the most they can for their money. At that time, going from schematic design, we also sat down with the town staff and went through the technology and furniture, fixture, and equipment. There was money identified originally for that. Let me go back to that page, if I can find it here. There was money identified originally for that. And that number is higher now. Once we've gone through that in detail with what is desired to operate the building and required to operate the building adequately, that number in those original budgets was too low as well. So, the numbers that have changed were the construction cost. Looking at it in detail, it's more expensive than what we had initially put dollars in for. That's also based on bids, as we've seen them come in lately. So, trying to be as current as possible. And then the equipment dollars, the number that was identified originally was not, was not adequate as we got into the detail of it. And maybe we should have had it higher. Again, it was probably a case on our part, knowing what we wanted the budget to be of trying to make it work. And when we got into the detail, it just didn't work.
So, if I'm hearing you correctly, you're saying construction cost, design details, bids where they're currently coming in, and equipment are reasons that take from seven to 7.9.
As the cost of the project has went up, our fee, looking at it as a, typically based on a percentage of the country, our... typically based on a percentage of the contract, our fee has gone up a little bit too to accommodate that, that changed, so that's...
Okay.
Further questions? Items of discussion? Thank you, gentlemen. Please call the roll.
Ms. Gaines?
Hi.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McBride?
Aye.
Ms. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. Resolution is approved. That concludes our business here tonight. Before taking a motion for adjournment, are there concerns or comments from the council? Motion for adjournment, please?
移到
Please call the roll.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McBride?
Aye.
Ms. Lorenz?
Aye.
Ms. Gaines?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you.